The time is now five oh two. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to 2024 Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. My name is Shayla Adams Stafford, Chair of the Committee and District Four Board Member. It gives me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. Ms. Adley, and please call the roll.
Adam Stafford.
President.
Dr. Harris. Mr. Jango.
Present.
Ms. Buddha Strather.
Present.
Ms. Walker. Three in there from three present, we have a corner.
Okay. With the corn present, the Obama Committee will come to order. If there were, if there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the agenda of the October twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting agenda. Okay, with there being no objections, the October twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting agenda is adopted. Okay, if there are no objections, the committee shall postpone the September eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes to the next meeting. Okay, there being no objections, the September eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes are postponed to the next committee meeting. And we'll not move on to public comment. We do not have any registered public comment speakers for our meeting today. So we're going to move right along to item three point O. Chief Operating Officer Updates. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Charles Coleman at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Board Committee Chair Adam Stafford. We have several areas that we are, I'm sorry, my phone. We have several areas that we are prepared to provide updates if we could. I don't have the agenda of what is the first area that we are tasked with providing the update. I'm sorry.
No problem. The first one will be the Building Services Maintenance Audit. And then a summer projects recap permitting delay overview. And that that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then we also have Food and Nutrition Services here to provide an update around the meal meal payment plans. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Director Stefanelli. He's going to provide a brief overview of our maintenance program, and then we'll be open for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Staff. Now I'm Director of Building Services. If I be allowed to share, I have a PowerPoint I want to share with everyone that'll kind of highlight some of the points in our maintenance department. There we go. Can everyone see that? Okay, Building Services is made up of three former departments. So we had Department of Operations, Department of Environmental Safety, and Department of Maintenance. Two thousand thirteen, fourteen, the three departments were combined. One as a cost-saving measure and also operationally they they fit together. A lot of the work we do, we share and supplement each other so we can operationally, it makes sense. Our budget for maintenance is around eighty one million dollars a year. We have it separated by by our shops, our general maintenance fund, which is our big pot of money that we use. It's about thirty million dollars a year. We have a preventative maintenance budget that is this is only paying salaries for the individuals that work in the evening that perform our preventive maintenance or electric shop. Paint and glass shop, roofing shop, ground shop, carpenter shop, and plumbing shop. Our roof, our paint and glass shop has been disbanded and it's now paint is with carpenter shop. And the glass shop is with the roofing sheet metal, but we've kept their budget separate for a year so we could we could determine the amount of money we needed to give to each shop. So those those in twenty twenty five, those two budgets have been encompassed into the ground, into the carpenter shop and the roofing sheet metal shop. Plant operations, which before was a separate entity, they're responsible for our custodial operations. Their budget is eleven million dollars. And our environmental safety office's budget is three and a half million dollars for a total expenditure source of about eighty one million, eighty one million dollars. We have also within that thirty million dollars, we have these contracted services that we use every year. We have our trash and recycling services, which is one and a half million dollars. That encompasses about a third of our county. We're expanding our trash removal contracting services for the last three years. So that's going to expand in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Our HVAC Preventive Maintenance and Digital Controls is our biggest budget, six and eight, six point eight million dollars. Athletic Field Maintenance, which maintains all of our athletic fields at the high schools and middle schools, is two million dollars a year. We have our fire sprinkler testing and repair of seven hundred thousand. That's a compliance issue with the fire department. Boiler Preventative Maintenance is six hundred thousand dollars. Elevator testing and elevator third-party inspection is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's also a compliance issue with the state. We're required to test our elevators and have them third-party inspected annually, along with our fire and sprinkler systems. Grease traps, all of our cafeterias have grease traps to trap the grease and keep it out of WSSC's pipes and all our locations. This is the contract. We use the services grease traps. Also, our fire extinguishers, which is a compliance, have to be checked annually and replaced as needed. As part of our fire protection, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this year, we started our we have started independently having someone inspect our roofs. Historically, our staff inspected our roofs. However, because of the workload of our of the Asian roofs, we determined that there wasn't enough time for us to properly inspect the roofs and repair the roof. So we, this year, we began inspecting our roofs with a third-party inspector, which actually gives us a fresh set of eyes to look at our roofs, and it really does. It really does help to bring out some things that we may not have seen ourselves. Um, excuse me. This is a little, this is the organizational chart for for the building services. As you can see in red is operations, and that's makes up their office. The green is the environmental office, and the brown is the maintenance department. The blue is our administrative office, and they support our administrative office supports the whole team. Today, we're going to function mostly on this area right here. These are our planners. These are the people that are responsible for overseeing our contractors, and they oversee our projects throughout the summer. And the reason I want to show you is I want to show you the workload that we currently have for our planners. We have six planners. We have one planner that that is responsible for grounds, roofing, glass, and sheet metal. That planner has all our sportfield contracts, our stormwater management ponds, asphalt, concrete, replacement, our running tracks. And they're also liaison. All of these people are liaisons to our Department of Capital Programs. This person also has roofing lockers, windows, fencing, playgrounds as part of the roofing and glass shop. But we are in the process of creating a second planner to take some of the workload off of this person because the addition of stormwater ponds and some and playgrounds has really put a an additional workload on this position that we we feel that we need a second person here as we have done in other shops. In our electric shop, we have two planners. One planner is specifically responsible for fire alarms and sprinkler systems. And they're again liaison in the Capitol Park Department of Capitol Programs to help design and determine what fire alarms and sprinkler systems need to be replaced and help design them as as we move through that process. They also responsible for the annual inspection required by the required by the fire department and to keep all the documentation up to date in the schools. The second planner in electric shop, of course, has our electrical service, our exterior interior lightings, and they are responsible for the the contract for generators to perform our preventive maintenance, which is done on a monthly basis throughout the throughout the school system. Our generators only provide emergency lighting for the school. The generators in our schools are not designed to to power the entire facility. They are designed to come on in case of a power outage to provide light and provide emergency services so we can evacuate the building. Our carbony shop, we have one planner. That planner is we're that planner is responsible for the indoor and outdoor bleachers, gym floor replacement. I'm sorry, we put roofing in there, but they're really only they only really deal with the wood part of the roofing system. They're we're required, they're they're also responsible for painting contracts. We try to paint ten schools a year, which puts us on a twenty-year plan to repaint the schools doors and the building envelope, which would consist of everything short of the windows, the out the interior walls, the exterior walls that encompass the building. In our HVAC plumbing shop, we have two planners. We have an HVAC planner who is responsible for our PM contractors for chillers, cooling towers, and our large equipment. We have a monthly contract for monthly inspection and PM for all of the all of that equipment. They're also responsible for any permits that we need to obtain for our capital programs officer for our contractors and some equipment replacement. Our our HVAC department uses county-funded capital program, capital funding to replace in kind certain equipment, and we supplement our capital programs office by having our staff handle the smaller projects in order to alleviate some of the pressure on our Department of Capital Programs. On the plumbing side, we have a plumbing planner. That's our liaison to WSSC. He holds our master plumber license, so he's responsible for all of the plumbing systems with WSS for the school system with WSSC, which includes all of our backflow certifications that are required annually, interior and exterior plumbing, storm sewers, stationary sewers, grease traps, and he's also liaison to capital programs to help develop future plans and help manage projects when needed. Just to give you an idea of what we've done. In two thousand fourteen, after the two programs were the three programs were joined, we looked at our maintenance department and saw, looked to see what we needed to do to improve. At that time, the maintenance department was completing about eighty to eighty-five percent of the work that was requested annually. We weren't at the point where we could even keep up with the the work. We were fifteen, twenty percent behind every year, which is going to deferred maintenance. So we looked at our program, and we had to do one of two things. So the only way to solve that was to either increase the number of work orders that we can do or reduce the number of work orders we can get. We had to get to a hundred percent of the work orders that we're receiving every year, or we were always going to be losing ground every year. So first goal was to get to a hundred percent. So we stopped losing ground and then start to move forward. As you can see, in two thousand sixteen, our our mechanics were only doing forty-five work orders a month per mechanic. We pushed that up to a high in twenty twenty-two of fifty-one, and we're hovering right around fifty right now. We look, we we probably in twenty twenty-four will get above, get above fifty. This is an annual. This is not a fiscal year. This is an annual year. So we're looking at to to keep ground with with FY twenty-two. Just to kind of give you an idea of our our work order systems and FY twenty-four, what this shows you is the blue is the work orders we received in FY twenty-four, and we completed in FY twenty-four. In orange, those are work orders we received in FY twenty-three, and we completed in FY twenty-four. The the gray is FY twenty-two, and the three hundred sixty-five would be FY twenty-one. So in FY twenty-five, it's the same thing. Nine hundred sixty-five in the blue are the ones that we I'm sorry, this is this is an annual year in twenty twenty-five, we we completed nine hundred sixty-five so far, three thirty-eight hundred, a little over thirty-eight hundred from FY twenty-four, then four hundred seventy-seven from FY twenty-three and so on. Our goal is ultimately to do the oldest work orders first. That is the main goal of our our workforce. However, we have priorities, whether or not there are emergencies that are going to affect school. We have work orders from our IAC inspection that are time-sensitive that we have to do, whether or not we need to be in compliance. There are seven parameters that will adjust how what what work orders get what priority. However, at the end of the day, we're trying to get the oldest work orders done first because we feel that if three doors are broke, we should fix the door that was that as the oldest work order first. We we don't want to be in a situation where we're just leaving those old work orders there to die that we're actually attacking them. This number was significant a few years ago. We've reduced these numbers for these previous years at a great pace over the last three years. This is a snapshot of our open work orders as of October twenty-first. So as you can see, in FY twenty-five, we have six hundred and sixty-three hundred. There are bouts that were put in enough in, I'm sorry, in yeah, in FY twenty-five, FY twenty-four work orders, we have currently have close to six thousand still from FY twenty-four, fifteen hundred from FY twenty-three. We have two hundred and sixty from FY twenty-two and six from FY twenty-one, and we're working on this backlog. And the reason why I wanted to show you this is because when you see this chart right here has, is this is the chart that we use to measure our success. And having explained what I what I just explained will help you understand this one. I'm going to shift to a little bigger picture. There you go. So if you look at this first column, FY sixteen, the green represents the work orders completed in in FY sixteen that we received in XY sixty, FY sixteen. The ninety-four hundred in the gray are the work orders we received. We completed in FY sixteen, but we received them in FY fifteen, fourteen, and therefore and across the board. All of these columns are for a different fiscal year, and they show how we are hailing our workload. The one thing I want to point out, and this is important, and we have a lot of new board members, so I'm not sure that you would remember this. We started this process in F, like I said, in FY fourteen, and we were at eighty percent. When we got to FY sixteen, we got it up to about ninety-five percent. We were close to a hundred, not quite there yet. FY seventeen, we got it to just about a hundred percent that we were doing, a hundred percent of the work that we were, the same amount of work orders that we received as in that fiscal year. The problem is eighty-five hundred of them were from previous years. So there's still eighty-five hundred work orders from FY seventeen that we haven't completed. And what that the issue with that is is that there's always going to be that group of work orders that aren't getting completed on time or in the fiscal year or quickly enough that that's where the phone calls and the emails and in the schools asking for help because work orders aren't being completed. Those work orders are in this group of eighty-four hundred that aren't going to be completed in the fiscal year that they were actually requested. The the we got to sixteen and seventeen, and we we had reorganized the maintenance department in two thousand fourteen and fifteen. We added some additional resources. For example, our HVAC shop only had forty percent, thirty percent of our resources, and they have sixty percent of our work. So we shifted some some FTEs around within the maintenance department, increased the size of the electric shop, increased the size of the HVAC shop because their work orders were a bigger part of our overall numbers, and they needed more resources. We added some additional supervisory positions. Every year for the last six years, we've remodeled one of the shops. Started with our seven hundred, our ground shop, then our plumbing HVAC shop. We bought a new technology. We brought it up to today's standards so they can operate efficiently within that shop. And at and this year, our eight sixty shop, which is our roof and sheet metal shop, we finally completed that shop, which is our last shop upgrade. And the reason why I say that is because as of FY sixteen and seventeen, we had gotten as far as we could get. We were plateauing at about ninety-five percent, ninety percent of the work we received that year completing. FY eighteen is significant. If, as you can see, FY eighteen was the first year and one of the only years that we were able to actually complete more work orders than than we than we received. This red line is the completed work orders. The reason why that's significant is if, I'm not sure if you remember, but in FY eighteen, the Board of Education voted to give maintenance department an additional five million dollars. That represents the largest and and only increase of that size since I've worked here. The maintenance department never got any additional resources that I can remember. I was not working directly in the maintenance department, but I was in facilities until FY eighteen. That surge started the increase in our budget every year since then. The superintendent has requested and the board has approved an increase in the maintenance budget. And that is the catalyst for this improvement. We went from not completing a hundred percent to completing over a hundred percent. And FY twenty-one and FY twenty are our COVID years. So these numbers are kind of skewed. This was all around preparing for COVID. But if you look at the trend, the trend is going upwards, upwards, upwards. We're we're constantly we're constantly increasing our ability to complete work. The one issue we are having is our buildings, more than half of our buildings are over forty years old. So they're aging. So a building that is in FY sixteen was forty years old. Now that building is eight years older, and the the our work orders are increasing exponentially each year, as you can see. But we are improving dramatically, and that improvement is not just the improvement from our department, although our our workforce, our partnership with local twenty-two fifty and our workforce has done an outstanding job increasing their efficiency, but it also is is a result of the extra funding that the Board of Education has provided to us. And we'd like to say we we inherited this issue of these old facilities that weren't very well maintained. This isn't something that 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 I was a part of or anyone that's on the board now. But but this is our issue now, and we are we are the first group, in my opinion, that is effectively dealing with these issues of our old buildings. We still have an issue with, you know, capital programs did a study, and they had a they have a plan to completely modernize and upgrade our facilities, and the cost of that plan is about seven hundred million dollars a year. And we're still looking at a hundred, a hundred and forty million dollars in capital expenditures every year. So we have that deficit to deal with. So that is the replacement plan to replace these assets. And without an increase to that plan, it's going to be very difficult to do much better than we're doing. We're increasing our ability to do the work, but the buildings are increasingly needing more work as we move forward. This FY twenty-five is only a few months old. If you calculate that out, we're looking at being over fifty thousand work orders by the end of the year, probably somewhere around fifty-five thousand work orders from forty thousand work orders that we received in two thousand sixteen. So as you can see, the maintenance department is increasing its efficiencies, increasing its ability to to perform the work, but the work is is outpacing us because of the age of our facilities. The one thing that we have to understand is if you look at the 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 conditions of our building, some of the emails we get, the correspondence with the principals, because I talk with the principals on every day, and I and I and I constantly ensuring my staff. Now, we go home every Friday, and we feel like we're failing because of the amount of work that we have to to contend with. But the fact of the matter is, if you look at the data, we have been very successful. This is not going to happen overnight. This is like a twenty-mile march, but our march has been uphill since um since the beginning, and we and we should be proud of this. The board should be proud of this. Without the board's additional resources they've given to us, we would have never gotten here. And I don't know that the board understands that because the the amount of issues that we're we have with our facilities, and you you know the phone calls you get, the emails you get. But you have you have been a catalyst in helping me with the improvement of of the workforce. And the one thing I need to point out is FY twenty-four, we replaced our work order system. So these numbers in FY twenty-four are not accurate numbers because of the data that we lost when we did the changeover from our former work order system to our new work order system. So that's why you're going to see that 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 we're that we are only at forty-five thousand. But the reality is we this this number really isn't accurate, and I I'm not in a position to 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 take a guess at what it was. But I would think, looking at the trends, that we're we either equal to or we're doing better than we were the year before. Okay, that's my presentation. Have take any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, thank you. I have a few questions. I'll let my colleagues go first. Go ahead, Board Member Boozer Strather and Sher Walker.
Okay, thank you so much. It's really great to see the data in this format, and I want to congratulate the team on on all the work and keeping up with it. I certainly, you know, like you said, as board members, we live the 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 details of this as we get to know these old buildings in our districts and what our school-based staff are managing. If if the funding resources were there, are you able to hire the experts you need? Are you able to hire enough plumbers and electricians and are they available or or there's still staffing shortages in in some of these categories?
Um, there's there's still some issues with that. It's getting better. However, what you're aware of is we have partnered with our CTE program. We have a student apprenticeship program. And the reality is is that that is solving that problem for us. We're we're bringing students. What we do is a student is an student apprentice for in eleventh and twelfth grade, and they work for me in the summer and in their senior year when they can, and that's how they get their work hours. When they graduate, we have limited, but we do have apprentices positions. We hire them as employees, and I finish their education. I send them to school and get them through their last two years or three years of apprentice, depending on what the timeline is. And that's helping us with our very skilled employees, electricians, HVAC mechanics, plumbing. Without that program, we would be in trouble. But we're getting some very good employees. I'm that's the thing I'm most proud of is that program because we didn't even think about that when we started. We were just trying to help out the CTE program. But it's been a catalyst to help solve our problem with finding with finding qualified people. If I had my daughters, they would all come out of that program.
Yeah, that's great to hear. And of course, we we as a board would be interested in knowing where we could support expansion of that if there are positions that are not in the CTE program that could reach all these other divisions.
And the issue, the issue is not funding. The issue is I need to have qualified employees to act as the mentor, and the that that's what limits us. As many people as we can handle, we take on. So if if I have four mentors available, I will take four on if I only have two. But every year, we add another group. So I have the eleventh grade group. I have the twelfth grade group, and now I have the the group that graduated that are now apprentices. So it really eases up my ability to 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 perform the work because of the mentors. It's not a funding issue. It's a it's a staffing issue, but as we grow. But as we grow, um, that will, that will increase as well. But I appreciate your, your concern.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you so much. Um, this was a great presentation. I really do appreciate you bringing perspective. And so to the apprentices that are out there, I do want you to pass along a sincere thanks for everything that you all are doing in schools. I know that our schools, as you mentioned, are extreme, they're aging. Um, we get emails about, uh, everything you see, so I don't have to go into those. I want to leverage our time to be able to assist. Uh, board member Boozer Strutter asked the exact questions I was going to ask. So thank you for that, but I really want to dig into how the board can assist. And I know you talk mentors. Are those student mentors or no? Can you talk to me about who the mentors are?
So a mentor is, uh, for, let's take an electrician. I have a, I have a journeyman electrician that has ten years' experience. That's the mentor. That person works one-on-one with the apprentice. So I have, for every apprentice I have, I have to have a skilled employee to be their, that's their mentor. And they work with them. And what we do is we, every so often we switch. So they, they get to work with a couple of different mentors. But I have to make sure that the person that's teaching them knows what they're doing. So we only have a select few with a lot of experience that could be that mentor. And I tell you, I, I, one thing I'm most proud of is we asked our employees, our ma- our mechanics to put a student in their truck and take a student with them by themselves. It was not something that they, they were nervous when we took that and when we started that. Because you're, you're talking about having a student with you alone. Uh, and it, it has been such a, a turnaround for my shop. Because they, they act like these kids are their nephew, their niece, their granddaughter, whatever the case may be. Uh, and they're very protective of them. And it really has, um, it's brought more energy into each department because now you have some kid that you're trying to teach. So it's a whole different philosophy. So the whole program has been, um, has, has been great for us and for, and for the students as well. But as we get bigger and these apprentices get to the point where they can start being mentors, we can expand this program.
No, this is awesome work that you're doing. And so for my last fifteen seconds, I want to do this and then I'll come back after, um, there's a second round is if you can get creative with your team and come up with programs that then we can help to push out, whether it's a, uh, refer your friends type of thing or, uh, what it looks like going into wherever these skilled people are, then help us to help you and we will do that work for sure. Thank you. And I'll come back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on a few things. Um, and thank you for the presentation. Can you return back to the planners? If I, I guess I wanted to see if you could clarify for me. Were you saying that there are two planners or six planners that are responsible for all of those topics? There are six total.
There are six total. This number underneath is an FTE. So I have one FTE in the planner position for the, for these, these two shops. And this used to be, we used to only have three. There was two, each planner had two shops. Now we've expanded that thanks to, again, the board get, uh, over, over the last five years, expanding the resources that we have. So there's one FTE, one planner for these two shops. There are two planners that handle electric shop and these are the functions. One's for fire alarms. It's a completely different skill set, fire alarms and electrical service. Then you have one planner for the carpenter shop. And then we have two planners for the HVAC shop because again, it's two different skill sets, one's plumbing, one HVAC.
Okay, so just, so are you saying one of the key levers to reducing the work order load is technicians or planners?
No, I'm just, um, I was asked to about, um, our ability to manage projects. And so I, and this is why I put this together, because this is, this is our project management arm. Now we are able to, uh, because we partner with, the Department of Capital Programs. So Department of Capital Programs is all, is able to supplement us with some project managers on some of our big projects like roofs, um, and things of that nature. And so they help us out. But for the most part, these planners are the ones that determine the work and oversee a lot of the work, especially our contracted services that I showed you on the contract service page.
So they would be responsible for like quality control, quality.
Exactly. That's exactly what.
That's something that we're hoping to see in the audit. And I guess my question is, uh, what, what lever do you think if pulled helps us complete more work orders in a more timely fashion? Just I understanding, understanding that schools are aging, but as you're looking at the entire spectrum, is it hiring more technicians, hiring more planners? Or it, and then my other question is, do we have a triage system of work orders? So I see all of the total amount of work orders. But are we determining which, which are priority? I heard you mention that, but what do you have like a triage system to where perhaps a certain planner can just focus on those work orders that are being triaged, that are deemed as urgent to make this faster?
Yes, and, and these planners are mainly dealing with, um, contracted services and projects for the most part. They also plan when we have issues where we have to have two shops. Let's say the carpenter shop and the HVAC shop have to work together. The planners will work to make sure that's scheduled. But within this, uh, organization, we also have lead, we have a, we have a master electric, master foreman. Then we have leads and our leads are the one that determine the work orders priority. Um, I have a plumbing lead, I have two HVAC leads. I have a, um, uh, energy management lead. And they, they're the ones that, that handle the day-to-day, assign the work orders in our work order system and make sure that work gets done, the supplies are purchased. Uh, our carpenter shop, I have, I have a lead carpenter, I have a lead painter, I have a lead, uh, lead in my roofing glass shop. I have two leads in my ground shop.
So just so I'm understanding, the leads are responsible for the prioritization?
Yes, the, the planners do projects and contract services. The leads are operating the workforce. The, the, the labor, the, the labor of our, of our staff.
Okay, so would it be, is it out of the spectrum to have a, you know, a lead and a planner and a group of these technicians that focus just on triaging literally urgent issues? I'll give you an example. There's a school in my district, James McCamery, they're telling me they don't have one bathroom for the whole school. That's urgent, right? Would you, how do we determine, you know, okay, there is that issue, then there's like a door handle that's broken. At a school, it's been broken for a year and it keeps breaking. You need to replace the door. Bathroom versus door, right? So who, who is deter- can we, would this?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Like that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so, uh, along with this, this is our shops, our facility, uh, Jason Grusilla, who's our other facility supervisor, he's got three coordinators. And each coordinator has a third of the schools. So that type of triage that you're talking about, that's our communication with the principal, our facilities coordinators. Our facilities coordinators talk to the principals and they determine and they work with the master foreman to get the work done. So in a situation where there was an issue with the restrooms in the school, that's a phone call to the facility coordinator. Uh, but I can rest assured, you don't have to make that phone call. I'm going to do that first thing in the morning if we only have one.
And Sam, you may want to mention the, the standard operating procedure we have in place that the leads follow to look at the work orders and priority.
So typically what we do is, um, emergencies would be a situation like if they only have one bathroom. So we should take care of that right away. We have emergencies, um, that, emergencies that are health and safety. Then you have emergencies that are going to affect school or the educational process. And then they're in a priority of elem- special centers, elementary schools, middle schools and high schools. So if we have two issues, one at the high school and one at the elementary school, we're going to attack the elementary school first. Because the younger the students are, the more vulnerable they are to issues. So that's why we have that priority in place. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm going to go to Chair Walker next and then I'll come back for a second round.
Chair Walker, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Okay, while she comes off mute, I'll take a second round. I, my question, uh, you know, when you mentioned mentorship, you just, I'm understanding. Are you saying that the mentorship they're currently receiving is just from PGCPs employees at this time?
Yes, the mentor is what we call the mechanic that is teaching an apprentice. It's a, it's a mentor apprentice program. So that's a, oh, that's just someone who holds a journeyman, just like in any other apprentice program. You have a journeyman that acts as a mentor to the apprentice.
Now, um, I will say, I just, I used to work in a, um, trade place of work at Phelps.
Okay.
So I.
So you know the relationship.
Oh, yes, and I'm so happy to hear about this, um, apprenticeship program. What, what is our connection to our local unions? I don't have to tell you. That in this, in this area in Prince George County, we house like all of Maryland's major labor union training centers. So is this a connection the board needs to make? Because we certainly can help with getting those mentorships. I mean, they're begging to get into schools to support. What can we do?
Sure, that certainly would be helpful. Um, we have as a part of the blueprint, uh, that is pushing, uh, CTE and expansion of the apprenticeship programs. We're currently in active communication with some of our union partners about ways that they can also provide those opportunities around mentorship uh, in support of, of students who want to go into these career and technical education fields. Uh, and so providing that support would be helpful, but that work is also actively being done with our CTE programs, with our Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development and across several other departments.
Okay, Dr. Coleman, say less. I will, you know, make sure that I do any advocacy that I can to connect, um, to help with that. And I'd love to know just numbers to help with advocacy. So for example, if there are twenty students in the program and you're looking for twenty mentors, how many are plumbing? How many stain fitters? How many? Then I can be more targeted. Okay, go ahead, Chair Walker.
Yes, thank you. Um, very nice. I, I love that all the board members are on the same page and asking the same questions. Because what help looks like truly is to deliver those type of things to us so that we can be active partners and ensuring we have what we need. We know that we have aging schools and it's not, um, I know everybody's doing all of the work that they can. But the, the things that we know and we see is that emergencies are not only one bathroom, but they're, uh, non-potable water, um, or there that is leaking inside of a classroom. Are there, the point is, is that we have a plethora of emergencies that span district. Each one of our board members can say what's happening inside of their districts. So what help looks like is saying, hey, if the gap you're telling me is not funding, because that's what I, that's what I thought it was first, but it, it must not be that. Then if the gap is that we need mentors, then it needs to be to push for the mentors that we need. So if it's the push for the mentors that we need, then how can the board help with that? Is that partnerships? So I guess, Dr. Coleman, what I'm, what I'm really looking for strategically is what is the root cause of the gap that you're seeing? Okay, if the, if the goal is to maintain our schools, which of course that's our goal, right? That, that's what the work is doing. We're all right there. And so what's, what's preventing us from doing that? You did a great presentation on it, but really get targeted on what it is. And then tell us what help looks like so that we can collectively create a board strategy to ensure that we're not only partnering, but we're in the front lines of it, okay? If it's funding, this is legislative season. Allow us to do the work, but allow us to have one voice so that we can go out and do that as partners. Just help to arm us with what those things look like and exactly what it is. So as we're talking to people, because they come all the time and say, hey, we waiting to get inside of this school. We want to do this. Nobody's getting back to us on this program. Help us to be organized around it. So each board member knows exactly what they're saying. And they can speak on behalf of the administration and us and our constituents as well. Does that make sense? And I know you all are doing the work, but this is like the extra push we need and we're ready to do that.
Yeah, thank you so much for that, Board Chair. I think present opportunities like this and even tomorrow night at the board meeting where we can go in, uh, into more detail around our capital improvement program and our educational facilities master plan. All of that ties together to give a complete picture that then arms the board to, to advocate for the district in a way that's effective. So it's not just maintenance, it's not just capital. We have to tell a total story.
Thank you so much. Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, you're saying go now. Okay, um. Yeah, Dr. Coleman, I love that. So when you do do the presentation, I think we're constituents can in. Here in their school is lacking well, it, and you do the presentation and you give all this great news. We know the things that are happening right now. So the question is going to be, and it'll happen one tomorrow too, is what needs to be true for us to move forward with, um, efficient effectiveness quickly because we're struggling now. So I would just be ready to answer that question, um, tangibly. Is it funding? If it is, then how much does it look like? Is it people, these mentors? Well, then give us the plan to help to do it. Like tell us what the action plan is so that we can see the needle moving forward. If that, if it helps at all, that would be really helpful for tomorrow or.
Just a little bit of your statement broke up, Board Chair. I heard everything except you said what needs to be true. And then it garbled out for just a little bit. Do you remember exactly?
That was all the good stuff. Maybe I'm going out. I'm not sure.
It was a little bit.
Okay, I can send it to you, okay? That was the good stuff.
I think what I, what I'd like to say, I think is in just kind of dovetailing what, um, Chair Walker is saying. Do you think that tomorrow you all could provide us with, what we're asking is for root cause? We want to know if it's, if it's not funding, if it's mentorship, we want to know how many students are in the mentorship program? How many mentors do you need? What areas do, like a, a table? You know, so that we can have a better understanding of what we need to do. Is it a policy that needs to change? Um, you know, that's what we're trying to get some more information on in terms of just root cause. And I know that as we do the audit, that's going to reveal some of those things. But we're asking for you to provide us with a road, not necessarily a roadmap, but, but some inputs so that we can be more supportive. Um, if, I hope that captured what, what you were saying because that's what I'm thinking as well. Um, I know we have to keep going now, um, but thank you for this presentation. Um, and do you think that we can have at least the mentorship information by tomorrow's meeting? Just in terms of the numbers?
Challenge to have it by tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, okay. So we can wait on that. That's no problem.
Thank you.
But just knowing that if I could, um, I'm, if I could just really quickly for tomorrow, is it okay, um, Chair, um, Adam Stafford? Is she on mute? Did she say yes, y'all?
She said yes, yes.
Okay, if we could, I recognize that asking for data is a lot the night before, so I recognize that. But knowing what the questions are going to be, because we, all of us sit on the board, then if you can just at least address what the action plan is that you are taking away tonight or that you're going to have in the future. If you can just say like, hey, we will be looking at X, Y, and Z and look to get this information back to the board. Even if it's a month from now, I'm assuming it's not going to be a month. I'm making that up. But to be time conscious of what that is, because I think that this was a great discussion. And I think you all have taken away some things that we can help do. So really the action is to help us to do a, a great job in supporting you all. Makes sense? Because you already know. I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you, um, Chair, Adam Stafford.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I'm looking forward as we continue to go through this, um, to, you know, continue to have these discussions. Thank you, uh, Dr. Coleman. Dr. Coleman, I'm going to recognize you now as we move to, um, item three point two of summer projects recap and permitting delay overview.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Director Jackson and also to Project Manager Supervisor, Mr. William Smith from the Department of Capital Programs to provide this update.
Alright, good afternoon. How's everyone doing tonight? Uh, my name is Will Smith. I'm the Project Management Supervisor for Department of Capital Programs. Uh, we put together a brief, really just condensed overview on our, uh, summer or completed summer improvement program, uh, which incurred this summer, and so we'll move forward with that. That's not working. Give me a minute. Alright, uh, related to our summer projects or our summer program for FY twenty four this past summer, uh, we had roughly a total of seventy-four projects. Those projects were a hybrid uh, between phase projects, which are projects that occur over multiple years, multiple summers, et cetera. Uh, but then also summertime specific projects in which those projects can only occur during the summertime. Of those total projects, three of them were new schools and replacements. So that's gonna be your William Wirt. Uh, that's gonna be your, uh, Eleanor Choa Middle School. Uh, that is also gonna be your Sulin High Schools. Uh, we had renovation projects, which would be your James Madison's, et cetera. Uh, we have five environmental projects, which would be especially debatement related projects. Three ADA upgrades, thirteen systemic HVAC replacement projects or upgrade projects where we will go in and upgrade the HVAC systems or components are related to that. Uh, one was an exterior door and window replacement project. Uh, six were code correction projects, which may be, you know, a fire alarm, uh, replacement or update. Uh, one was a kitchen and food services, uh, upgrade project or replacement project. Uh, five were life safety, three athletic improvements. So that's gonna be your, uh, your Bladersburg Stadium renovation, your Laurel High School Stadium renovation, uh, the bleacher, uh, replacements that occurred over at Crosson High School. Uh, three parking lot resurfacing projects, six playground replacements, seven roof replacements. You know, we, I think we did, um, Apple Grove this year, uh, Greenbelt Elementary School, Oxen Hill Middle School. What is it? Columbia Park, uh, Lewis Dale Elementary School. So those are just gonna be some of the sites for your, uh, roof replacer projects. And then fourteen are just minor, um, building related repairs. As you see from the pie sheet, kinds of gives a breakout of what each, uh, one of those categories, the percentage of the work that occurred this summer, what that equates to. Um, and so that is that. Um, the next three sleep or slides that we have are really just breaking out the, the improvements per Board of Education District uh, in alphabetical order based on the locations. Uh, and so District One, um, at Buck Lodge, there was a total of twelve projects in District One this summer. Uh, we have three, uh, projects at Buck Lodge, which consists of the general renovation project and your PA and clock system, um, improvements. We had a fire alarm replacement that occurred over a deal for a run. Uh, over our Duval High School, we had your elevator lift replacement and some of best, uh, especially debatement, uh, improvements there. Dwight Eisenhower, we had locker replacements. Uh, Hypeon High School, we had an elevator modernization that occurred there. Uh, at Howard B. Owen Science Center, that was a multiple, multiple year funded and, uh, delivery project. So that was a pretty much a total renovation project, which, um, finished up early this summer. And that was one that everyone was, uh, extremely proud of there. Um, and then over in District Two, we had a total of, uh, six projects. At Eleanor Roosevelt, we had auditorium seating replacement, green belt roof, uh, replacement, as mentioned earlier on. At Lamont Elementary School, we have playground replacements, uh, as, uh, over at Paint Branch, we had additional.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the detail in this presentation. I know that we have the nine districts and I'm not sure if you were planning to go through all.
Well, I can just do high level. You're right. Absolutely. My apologies for that.
Hey, this is the te- detail we have asked for and I appreciate you and Dr. Coleman and the team for just, you know, giving us this level of detail. Uh, uh, if you could just get on the screen, just give us the overview for the district, like how many projects? You know, you know, how, if there were more system upgrades or what have you, but we just kinda need to see that just by districts. There's so many, we don't have much time.
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't break it out by category per district. We did category or number of projects per district. Okay, so that's something we can follow up with and and give you that information. Uh, but per district, we had twelve in District One. Uh, we had six in District Two, uh, six projects in District Three, eight projects in District Four, six projects in District Five, nine projects in District Six, um, six projects in District Seven, thirteen projects in District Eight and Nine, uh, I'm sorry, six projects in District Nine. And so that would just be the total amount of projects per district, uh, which will perform. And we can follow up with a breakout of what that looks like in terms of category, uh, cost, et cetera.
Yes, I think that's what we're looking for is more the cost, the category, so that we can have, uh, basically a systemic understanding, like our, our, most of our summer projects, roof replacements. And we know that students aren't there in the summer, so we can do big projects like that. I think we've, we can understand that. But just getting an understanding of the types of projects, the amount, and then my question is just, wh- where are they in the status? Have there been delays or where are you finding the most delays? In what types of projects?
So these projects, once again, so the projects which are summertime projects, those projects are wrapped up, those are done to allow them to proceed with summer, uh, with school opening. The ones that were phased and sequenced, the element that was supposed to be scheduled during the summertime and performed in the summertime, that's completed. And allow us to be able to move forward with the next phase, uh, of work or rescheduling for the, the following summer for some of those projects that are summertime only, but multiple phase.
So all of these projects were completed? Is that?
The summertime work for those that are phased, the summer work that was designated for this summer was completed. Uh, those projects in which they're not just, uh, that they're only summertime projects, then absolutely that work was performed and completed this summer.
Okay. Is there, um, I think we also in this section wanted to talk about permitting the delays. Um, before I go to questions, do we have, um, any update on that or was someone able to attend? Or can someone just speak to that generally? That was something that we were wanting, just a follow-up discussion on.
Yeah, uh, and so. Yeah, so the, the bulk of our, our, that is a complex conversation, right? Uh, and so it is one that, um, wanna make sure that we're saying the, the app, you know, absolute correct things, but being respectful as well. I think first and foremost, I, we, I think we all acknowledge that all of our partners, uh, whether it's PDCPS directly and internally, or our DPI, uh, SED, Maryland National Capital Park Planning, et cetera. Uh, everyone is, is really, uh, working with a deficit of, of manpower, right? To, to push the mission, uh, that is a large mission for the county. Um, and, and specifically just for Prince George County, we have a plethora of projects that, uh, that we're pushing out that all, uh, really requires, uh, you know, review and and approval through, uh, you know, DPI and and their partner agencies as well related to our projects. So I think first and foremost, I think it's just staffing, uh, you know, and and also retaining staffing. You know, they're, you know, our industry is extremely competitive. Um, and, and it's, it's, it's hard, uh, to find, uh, qualified competent, uh, employees. Uh, I mean, at one point, we were, I wanna say three years with, uh, project manager vacancies, trying to actively fill those and, uh, and were, you know, recently just successful of, you know, filling some of those roles. So, yeah, the industry as a whole, uh, you know, public sector is, is hard to compete against private sector and the bulk of the talent then goes to private sector, which then creates a, um, kind of what we're seeing in the public sector of just not having the staff really to, to push, uh, the mission. But in terms of just some of the challenges that I think we've experienced, you know, overall, I think the, the building permit process seems to be the, um, the process in which we're able to obtain, um, um, in more in a timely fashion. Uh, I think what we're seeing for especially our major projects, the bulk of the delays seem to occur with trying to get site, uh, permit approval, uh, to be able to allow us to move forward with, uh, site construction. Um, and, and, and the thing is with site construction, there's multiple agencies that are required and responsible uh, to go through, uh, and review our, you know, our, our documents, our construction documents, our designs. And they go through a plethora of different ways and phases and reviews. And it's not a concurrent review, uh, you know, through each agency. It's not as if we have this one set, you know, now it's done, submitted to all the agencies, they look at, review, issue their comments, make, you know, our, uh, adjustments and then get approval. You actually have to go step by step through each agency before you actually can move on to the next agency. So if you have Agency A, um, that is delaying or that is pushing back, uh, their reviews, um, and delayed on their reviews, you know, by months, then it then pushes out every other partner agency and what they had to do, uh, as well, right? Which then has an overall impact on the permitting process, the timeline associated with our permits, et cetera. And so I think that is one of the, the largest issues that I think, um, you know, really impacts our projects is just the site project, the site permits, you know, it has, you know, from, if we look at Sulin High School, we have incurred, uh, you know, roughly two years permitting delays. Um, if we look at Glen Ridge, uh, I wanna say it was a year and a half. If we look at William Wirt, it was somewhere around the twelve month, you know, thirteen month period. Look at Cherokee Lane, uh, Elementary School that we built, that was another one in which we incurred substantial delays on the design side. Um, and so that is something that, um, has a, you know, direct impact, uh, not just on timing, uh, with implementation, but costs as well, unfortunately. Um, and so that's something that I think, um, if we're looking at, you know, how do we improve? How can we expedite projects? Where is the, the area that we need assistance in? Um, it's really around, you know, trying to, one, I think, and and I think we've done it successfully with, um, with the ACF projects, you know, there, there has been, you know, designated meetings set up to really streamline the review process and and permitting process for those projects to make sure that they are moving in a fast pace, that everyone are on top of those and that they are being pushed, uh, with urgency. Uh, I know recently, not recently, within the last, let's just say, six months, seven months, we have established that, uh, same type meeting for Sulin High School and that has allowed us to be able to move forward, uh, with, um, some of the challenges that we have seen um, and get everyone, all the players in the same room in order to push, um, you know, those reviews and what's required uh, and to prioritize that as well. Um, so I think that's one thing, uh, to make sure that for, for all of our, uh, projects, um, you know, the school system, we get our funding directly, as you guys know, we're, we're funded directly from the county. And so any costs that we're realizing in terms of change orders or delay calls or, um, you know, caused to, to utilize third-party reviewers or peer reviewers, et cetera, that is all costs that are then burdened by the county regardless. Uh, and so trying to get that buy-in from, from our partners to understand, you know, we are, we are all working as one. We are all working in, in, um, collaboration to support the mission of Prince George County. Uh, it's not a, you know, one agency against another. Um, I think the other thing is really just understanding, um, getting clear, um, clear, concise, uh, you know, instructions on what's or requirements on, on when certain aspects are required and when certain code requirements aren't. Um, and, and getting that earlier enough. Uh, I think one of the issues that we've seen recently um, that has impacted some of these projects is most of our projects are, they're gonna be phased projects, right? You know, so Sulin High School, William Wirt, uh, uh, Middle School, those are all phased projects. And one of the biggest, uh, delays that we've incurred on both of those projects were around the phase requirements for stormwater management. Uh, and so in essence, for stormwater management, you know, at the end of the project, you have to, um, you know, implement a certain amount of stormwater management devices to satisfy the stormwater runoff comprehensively throughout your entire site at the end of the project, and that's how it was viewed before. That has now changed to where they say, you know, the requirement now is, um, as you're moving forward through phase, each phase needs to be designed to make sure that it's meeting the entire stormwater management, uh, requirements per phase, um, not at the end of the project. And so what that en- ends up being is you have to install additional stormwater management practices uh, to satisfy those requirements for that phase to just be demolished later on uh, in another phase as you're completing the project, which then has a direct impact on time, uh, construction time in order to make those additional improvements, demolish them, to then reinstall additional devices at the end. Um, but then also the additional costs associated with that, because, uh, those calls were not baked in, uh, with the contractor. They were, they were not even budgeted, you know, for the project as well, because that was a, a new requirement that that was kind of pushed on. And, 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 and it wasn't even a timely push on, it was, we're already probably eighty percent through design and and permitting. Uh, and now we need you guys to go back and redesign all of this in order to meet that requirement. So that, um, that was, um, a huge endeavor and a huge impact, uh, specifically on Sulin High School, uh, which kind of delayed that substantially. And so I would say, uh, that is one of the major issues. I know, uh, Director Jackson, you had your hand up.
I did, thanks. I just, you know, hearing, um, our Board Chair and Committee Chair's point, I just wanted to make a couple succinct points and that was, one, um, yes, uh, involvement from our partners in the board and the council absolutely moves forward, um, delayed permits. It moves forward delays with utilities. It is a very, very powerful tool. So we're definitely committed to when that occurs again, um, kinda screaming early before it's a, a big delay, right? The other part is I hear the comments about tomorrow night and I can tell you now that what we need is money. So what you'll hear tomorrow night is, is a root cause statement, a discussion of what our solution is. But I just wanna go ahead and make that note now that what we need is money. We do need about five hundred and seventy million dollars a year to implement the master plan the way it was designed, as Sam mentioned earlier. And we got a hundred and twenty million dollars last year. And that's not a hundred and twenty million dollars down from kind of the wish list five seventy. That's a hundred and twenty million down from even two hundred million a few years ago. So those vegetarian realities for us are really, 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 really problematic. And that is the main solution, uh, that we need to move forward, both on modernization and on equitable modernization, on the cycle two prioritization that we'll talk about, um, more tomorrow.
Um, Mr. Jackson would, um, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Jackson, for that note. Mr. Smith, was there anything else that you wanted to add, um, as you were just wrapping up your comments there?
Yeah, I, I think the other thing is just, you know, just making sure that everyone understands. So as part of our projects, what, what we're now, um, being, uh, challenged with is to make sure that we are, um, fairly, uh, doing our analysis to see what our projects, uh, how our projects have impact or potential impact downstream, right? So not just with the community, but within, um, you know, our downstream, you know, what are the areas that then have other impacts for other communities? Um, um, and that issue is also something that is now posing, um, some challenges as well, right? Because now you have to get, uh, buy-in from, you know, those communities, those HOA groups. You have to get easements kind of drafted up. You have to incur additional costs in order to get your civil engineers to go out there to, to do their work, to survey, to then draft up, you know, what those impacts are. If there are any, if they're not, then, you know, um, move, move that forward. Uh, and that is a timely process. That is not something, uh, that is over tonight. And so I think that is, um, you know, one of the other areas that, that we're seeing, um, that are now being, um, required of, especially on major projects, not on this smaller project, but definitely on your, your new schools, um, your major replacement projects, um, those items as well. And so I, I think, you know, just wrapping up, I think, um, we definitely appreciate all of the support that you guys can lend. Uh, definitely, as Director Jackson was mentioning earlier, it's not even just getting those, um, you know, those meetings with and and prioritizing the, uh, our, our projects with, you know, partner agencies, but also with our utility companies. Those are another major, uh, those are other major players that have direct impacts, uh, with, uh, the outcomes of our projects. Making sure that we can get them, you know, on board earlier enough, make sure we can get our work scheduled earlier enough to where it doesn't have an impact on, on our schedule and delivery of our projects. Um, I know Southern Maryland, Southern Maryland has been, um, you know, uh, one of the ones that we have been great with, um, having, you know, limited impact and, and, uh, with, but I will say, uh, BGNI and Pepco, they are, uh, definitely, uh, WSSC and Washington Gas as well. So it's, uh, those players definitely trying to get in the room and, um, and, and get in their buy-in to, to support the mission and to prioritize work is something that, uh, we need as well in order to support the mission and to avoid some of these delays that are being occurred on our major projects. And with that said, I thank you for your time tonight. Uh, if anyone has any additional questions, uh, we're available.
Thank you so much. Um, um, okay. I see your hand, Chair Walker. I need to get this thought out of my brain really quickly. I wrote it down before I forget. And then I'm gonna go right to you. My question is, is there a way you can give us some more detail in terms of? How many projects are in limbo due to site permit delays and then due to the stormwater? Requirements, so my understanding is that we have the most stringent stormwater requirements in the state, am I am I correct in understanding that?
Absolutely.
What you're telling me now is that previously you could. Plan for these at the end of the project, and they're saying that you have to have this sorted as you go through each phase of the project, is that what you're explaining?
In essence, yes, so before it was at the completion of your project, as long as you had all of your construction that met the total. Calculation requirement for stormwater management at the end of the project, you were fine, you satisfied the requirement. Now it's per phase, so as you're moving forth with phase one, phase two, phase three. Those calculate of the stormwater management devices that are required to meet the calculation for that. Portion of that phase has to be installed. And oftentimes you are dealing with site constraints, so those aren't the final stormwater management devices that are going to live throughout the life of the project. They're now being installed in a temporary measure to make sure that we meet those requirements. And then later on demolished in order to put in what the comprehensive plan is going to be.
And and so who who is making this determination? Is this done at the local level or at the IAC state level?
No, no, it's, no, it's, well, the stormwater management is a is a state mandate, but then how it's met.
Right, varies county to county, right?
I think that is being pushed through the county.
So this is an issue, the the county council has determined this.
Not county, county, our, our, no, not county council, but our our review partners.
Your review, and who are they? We just need more information, I listen, we just need more information, I don't, I don't, I feel like us as board members, we just understand this to be. We're seeing delays, right? The delay, the delays translate to costs. For us, we see change orders in the millions of dollars. We're trying to get to the root cause, and that's why in these meetings, we're asking some of these more targeted questions. And you can follow up with me on that, but I guess what I what I want to see is. Basically, my question to my colleagues is, you know, what, you know. How, I think that we need to request a meeting with Deepi to directly address the permitting backlog. And to advocate for more reasonable stormwater policies, because this is impacting our bottom line. And and when I'm managing projects, the only way to get something accomplished is to have some targeted focus on it every day. And I feel like, you know, we can't clearly can't do that as board members, but we're not tracking this at all. All we're seeing is increased changed order requests that are very expensive, delayed projects. And if what I'm really finally feeling like I'm understanding is that. Part of the cost is the permitting, and I know that we can fast track that because I've seen what we've done for both phases of the P three. And so what I'm trying to understand is, you know, the actual projects that are currently being delayed so that we as. Board members can do some advocacy, because these are schools that are in our communities, so. But that was my comment, I'm gonna go to Chair Walker and then Board Member Boozer.
Thank you so much. I love how aligned we all are tonight, all right. Because that was, you took the words right out of my mouth, I just, the first is, and then I want to go to summer work, because I had a question about summer work. But the first is, what needs to be true for us to get these needle movers to the table? Like if, because I know we know them, but it's permitting is it? I know we properly planned, so we already know now the schools that we're going to be doing work on. And I know you all do the proper planning around that, but maybe we can get to the table with them to say, hey, here's our plan. We're starting this process now, years before. And then we need, you know what I'm saying, so I see you, Mr. Smith, you're like, yep, so that's maybe something that we can help with. And this is all about, and I I say it all the time, wherever I can, educate, advocate, act together. We're about to get some T shirts made, because this is what we gotta do, we gotta educate the board, you all, our constituents. And then be able to advocate and act together, so. I'm I'm all aligned with getting that meeting, thank you very much for that, Board Member, I mean Chair, Adam Stafford. The second question I wanted to ask is around, I just wanted to put a note in the. Sitting with them to talk about the projects that's coming up, as well as where you're seeing the gap with the the long lead times. Okay, that's what I was talking about. The second piece I wanted to talk about was summer projects. So I know I have one school in particular, I have a lot of schools, twenty one of them to be exact, in District Nine, but we have one school in particular. Melwood Elementary where their parking lot. Has been an issue, it's it's horrible, right? Their parking lot has been an issue, they've been asking for help. But what happens is, it's not a school thing, it's not a county thing. It's a state thing, and it always is people pulling fingers, and so. I just think I need a little bit of help on if these could be the type of projects. Or partnerships that maybe we can, you all can consider us getting together with the relevant people, maybe at the start of the school year or even now, like all the time is good. To sit down and say, hey, these are the projects, because it'll help. By way of communication and collaboration, but it'll also help them to see the projects that we really need help on, because these turn to emergencies. And issues, so I just wanted to bring that up, and if you could help us to understand, how are we working with our partners? You don't have to answer now, but then how can we help to get to the table to get these projects in front of them? Because there's some stuff is not ours, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. So so but definitely Melwood Elementary School, that is one that we have, that is a, it's not just a traditional resurfacing project. It's actually a recirculation, and so we're going to be doing a complete redesign, or we're actually in the middle of designing and finishing up that permitting process. And hopefully that will be going out to bid in the first or or the first two months or three months of the new year. But that is one that did involve, you know, dealing with some of our partners with SHA, because they had existing. Project on Wood Yard Road, and how did that impact their project, et cetera? Because I know you got the big pushers for sidewalks and and also additional lanes for traffic, but I I would definitely could follow up on that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, that's only one, I just happen to have that at the top of my mind. Thank you. I'm sorry, is the action that be, but before Chair Adam Stafford comes back to recognize Board Member Boozer Struther? I'm sorry, are we walking away with the action that? You you all will take a look at how do we get our partners together to come to the table? And and figure out a discussion?
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna move, move that we do that, yes, after Boozer Struther, go ahead, Board Member Struther.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for the details. I'll address the. True dollar needs and the stormwater, the. I appreciate Director Jackson, you bringing up that annual value, it was about four hundred and twenty million a year when we did. Really started the advocacy with Educational Facilities Master Plan. And it was the first time we had success in moving the needle with Annapolis and with the County Council and investments and. And we saw some great results with our P three project county and school system funded, and then of course the built to Learn Act. But this this change from, like you said, the two hundred million down to this one closer to one twenty is. You know, it is kind of devastating, and we should be talking about it that way, we need to be talking about it that way. And I think what would help is a more more of the vision being presented in. In a visual data of if the four four fifty, with the number you said tonight. If the if the funding were there, what would that look like? So I used to carry around the four page cycle plan, and I could say. Here's cycle one, here's what we're working through, cycle two is massive, it's like triple the number of schools. So how can we visualize for all nine county council members, all senators and delegates? The vision of the full funding that's needed, so I would say, I think that's on us. That we need to be able to share that narrative of these school names that they're familiar with, right? That are in there, in there, all over the county, so. So that would be one thing I think we should move towards to get the advocacy campaign going. We need all stakeholders to understand the money comes from Annapolis and from the county. When we get into these lulls, there becomes that whole thing of the competition within. You know, so one school is louder and they get the plumber faster, you know, and that that is not a place that's good for us. We, you know, and we heard it during the the CIP budget hearing. We need all, everyone educated where to advocate, because if they're screaming at us. One school that's louder is just going to go first, and we see what with Mr. Stefanelli manages. And then on stormwater, those interims are critical, when these buildings are being built in our communities. That's the number one call we get is that stormwater runoff, so let's make sure we don't diminish. The effectiveness of stormwater management while we work through these processes, because. That 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 could just be terrible for community relations, and I lived it for Hyattville Middle, so let's let's not forget that part, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And. Something you mentioned about the visual presentation, I mean, for Legislative Day, do, can you all give us? Just like, I mean, just like a bare bones, like for more members of Boozer Strather is saying, just a a visual that says. This amount of money will allow us to do this many schools in this amount of time, like literally that simple, so that we can say. This is, this is the amount of funding we're getting, this is what we need to rapidly modernize the schools, like we need to put it in that. Term, I mean, I'm, that's just a straight question, do you think that that's something we could have, or something we could incorporate in legislative, I mean. Chair Walker, is there something we can add? I mean, that's what what we're hearing is that they need more, we need more money to modernize the schools quicker.
Yeah, the administration is putting together Legislative Day and at the board, however. I do believe that what they are asking for is let us see it visually. A pie chart to say this is all the money that they gave, this is where the money is going in big gigantic buckets, and then this would be great to be able to associate. Mind wise, like X amount of dollars equals the schools or equals the teachers or equals the all of the things that they're asking for. So yes, is the answer to your question, I agree, and we can send that over to Quincy and her team who's putting together Legislative Day. For sure.
Thank you, Director Jackson, I think you were coming up, you need to say something.
Yeah, I I just really like everything Board Member Boozer Strather said, and I just wanted to note the four hundred and twenty five million rate was in twenty fourteen dollars. So it's just five hundred and seventy billion now, which is like, you know, it's 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 a big number. But the other part of that is that when we talk tomorrow, you know, I'll have the recent years funding. Because that part is also devastating for us as well, and we haven't figured a way out. The other part, those cycle charts really, really were powerful. The only part is that the visualization tool would have to be vague, because you. We don't have an approved cycle two that I think we can really comfortably advocate for right now. I think part of the issue is the time it took to do cycle one, a lot of our cycle three schools have gotten into a place where. They're not going to support children much longer, it's it's the same with cycle two, so we really do need to. The cycle two and the cycle three prioritization, we need to make sure. There were some consolidations that were frozen back then in twenty fourteen. You know, Clinton Grove is always on the top of my mind because it had the worst facility condition in the county, but it was put in the master plan as TBD. Pending a capacity study, because at the time that was a strong language we could use around consolidation, and then it was frozen. You know, we weren't allowed to consider any consolidations for some years, but it's not going to make it to cycle three. So I I only part of the visualization is I don't think I can comfortably say it's the cycle two schools. But we can definitely come up with some options, because, yeah, I don't want that message to get lost, like we we would be moving faster, we would be modernizing, so we'll try to come up with. Something that helps speak that out.
Thank you, so I'm gonna make a motion right now, and I think I still have my quorum here. Okay, we have Jamal here, so I'm gonna, I move that. I move that the Board of Education request. A meeting with Deepi to. Understand and address the permitting backlog for the school system and its impacts. And, yeah, I think that'll leave that there, because what I'm hearing you say, Director Jackson, is that you all can put together a visualization. For, and we're going to coordinate with the school system for Legislative Day, so we don't need a motion around that, okay? So this is more for the a board action here. So that was my motion. Chair Walker.
Hi, I am not a voting member of this, of this team, but I think, I wonder if. You would consider amending it to, or somebody could help to amend it to. Because I think what we're asking, not only is the meeting that you're asking for, but really something with. All of our partners at some point, it's, it might be two different meetings, but really to get targeted on, these are what the projects are that we have. And this is where it's it's forelooking, you see what I mean?
I I'm clear on the other partners, and they mentioned the reviewers, so I'm assuming that's part of Deepi, so if I can change the language to say. All of our county level partners, is that, would that be?
That's what I was thinking, but Mr. Smith, what?
Can you all give us some guidance, because this is what what we're trying to accomplish is having a meeting with our county partners. To explain to them from the board's perspective how these permitting delays are impacting us financially, that's what we'd like to do.
Yeah, I think county and county review partners, right? So that that will encompass your Deepi, your SED, your, you know, fine grading, et cetera, requirements.
Okay.
Maryland National Capital Park and Planning.
County review partners, okay, so I moved that the Board requests a meeting with our county review partners to address. PGCP's permitting backlog.
And other related.
And other related delay issues. Director Jackson.
I'm not sure we have a backlog, I think at this particular moment, I don't know that there's any, there's no major school sitting and waiting. For permitting, you know, New Northern is coming up next for permitting, I think some of the smaller projects like Frederick Douglass, the stadium upgrade. Needs to be moved through, but I just think where we happen to be in the projects, we don't actively have something. We definitely aren't like, there's no backlog list of projects, we could be proactive about what's coming up next, we could communicate these things are priorities. That's definitely something I've done in other jurisdictions, you know, where the board is like, hey, this is upcoming, this is a priority for us, or or whatever the governing body is. So I just don't, I I just was hoping you didn't use the word backlog, that's.
Okay, I can strike the word backlog, so I'll say, move that the Board requests a meeting with our review partners to address permitting. And other related issues as it relates to school construction. And then we can bring up what have been permitting issues in the past, what are some upcoming projects? And some questions that we have around stormwater and some of the changes and how that can impact projects. Is that all amenable to everyone? Okay, so that sent, I don't know, Ms. Adley, and are you still here? Did you want to read that back and we can take the vote?
Yes, so I have, the motion is to move that the Board of Education requests a meeting with the county review partners. To understand and address the permitting and other related issue, and other issues related to school construction.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, is there any, any dis, any discussion, or is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Adley, and please take a roll call vote.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Jamal Jungle? Mr. Jungle?
Yes, I'm sorry, it kind of glitched out. Can you refrain, can you please restate anything that we just said?
The motion is to. Have the Board of Education request a meeting with the county review partners to understand and address the permitting, permitting, sorry. And other issues related to schools constructions.
Aye.
Miss Boozer Strather?
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, also we'll work on drafting that, transmitting that request to the full board. Thank you so much, okay, we're going to move on now to item three point, I'm sorry, item four point O. The Chief Financial Officer update, the Chair recognizes Ms. Howe, Chief Financial Officer for the Student Lunch Debt Report.
Chief Howe, you're on mute, but I I think I can take it. Okay, thank you so much. Board Committee Chair, this still is going to remain under the Operations Division. So it is my pleasure at this time to introduce Mrs. Patrice Quetolano Thier. She's the Acting Senior Food and Nutrition Services Supervisor and Ms. Sharon Morrison, who is the. who is the Food and Nutrition Services Accounting, uh, Manager. Uh, they're going to provide an update regarding the Student Lunch Debt Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, let's see, I actually, we prepared a PowerPoint. So I would need to share my screen and let me get that. Let's see, it's this one. Okay. Okay, perfect. Let me get in presentation mode. How do I get, oh, there we go. Whoops. Okay, um, so this is the presentation on, um, the school meal debt. We wanted to talk about Senate Bill seven, um, seven six zero, which basically prevents lunching. And we needed to revise our, um, administrative procedure regarding student, um, students without lunch funds, um, because of this, meals are not, are not allowed to be taken from students. And, um, but meals, meals are charged against, uh, a principal loan account. So meal debt may not be discussed with students. And, um, there are restricted and acceptable, there is restricted and acceptable communication with students um, regarding, um, regarding, you know, their accounts. Um, the funding at principals' loan account prior years. So as I've stated, we have, we're in the process of revising AP five zero eight three. Um, that is again, um, students, you know, without funds. But prior to twenty twenty-two, we had a negative balance in the principal loan account. Um, let's see. Twenty twenty-two, funding a principal, principal loan account, um, was, or the, was funded by the CFO's office. And in twenty twenty-three, there were credit balances established for each school, each school. And parents', um, parent donations and forfeited funds, um, were provided. We're actually going to break this down a little bit more, but this is just an overview. Okay, so as far as donations, you can see, uh, twenty nineteen, um, how much we had. Uh, this year, twenty twenty-four, we've met with Little Taco Minor. They, they have, um, um, they're, they're, they're working with us. They're actually working with other school systems. And they have said that they will donate a hundred percent of their proceeds for kid, for the kids' meals that they sell. Um, for this, uh, for the school lunch debt. Um, so, um, parent guardians also, parents and guardians and outside individuals can also donate funds um, to sp- either a specific school or the general, um, lunch loan allowance fund. So here is a chart. These are parents' online payment trends. So you can see, this is, um, the, these are parents making payments to My School Bucks. So you can see twenty sixteen, you know, um, a lot of money coming in. Then twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we had the pandemic, so there's nothing coming in. Um, twenty twenty-three, um, uh, parents and guardians were putting money into the, into the, their, their child's school lunch accounts. And then, but we've seen a gradual decrease since the, um, um, since the pandemic. So here, um, this, let's see, slide talks about our debt history. You can see from twenty nineteen, um, the amount was a hundred and thirty-six thousand. This and twenty twenty, the year twenty twenty, uh, it was only twenty thousand. And this is because we were not allowing, um, uh, meals to be charged. In twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we had, um, it was during the pandemic and all meals were free to students at the time. In twenty twenty-three, the debt went up to eight hundred and thirty-four thousand. And then you can see in twenty twenty-four, one point six million. And these were specifically just, you know, debt from about twelve thousand students. Twenty twenty-five, as of, um, yesterday, oh, no, no, uh, the twenty-first of this month, we have two hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, dollars, um, that were in debt due to, due to meals. And you can see on the right-hand side, the top schools, um, that have the negative charges as of the twenty-second of this month. So here's a list. So how is FNS addressing the lunch debt? Um, we are revising, um, AP fifty eighty, um, and that is under review. We promote actively the farms or the free and reduce, um, or parents and, um, families completing the, uh, free and reduced price applications. Um, or the meal, meal benefit applications. Weekly, our managers and satellite, satellite leaders at the school site, they have been, um, providing letters um, to the principals or letters for each, um, student. They give them to the principals. The principals are supposed to give them to the students. Quarterly, um, the central office is sending out letters to the parents regarding the, regarding the lunch debt. And, um, direct communication with students, um, it cannot be done unless the student specifically asks regarding their, um, you know, their account. Um, we are also, last year, um, we increased the CEP schools from one twenty-four to one thirty-two. Um, so that's another means of addressing the debt. So, and community eligibility, again, it's a non-pricing meal service option, um, for schools and school districts in low-income areas. It allows schools and districts to serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to enrolled students. And this reduces paperwork, um, families don't have to complete meal benefit applications. It increases meal participation, also eliminates the stigma of school meals because everybody gets to eat for, um, for free. And, uh, programs are allowed to provide innovative breakfast models, something like a second chance breakfast or breakfast in the classroom. And this will reduce financial strain, hopefully to, um, homes or to families. There is a chart on the right-hand side. It talks about the number of participant, participating schools. So you can see the increase of CEP, um, schools, um, since twenty twenty. So a significant jump after, um, in twenty twenty-four. So what more needs to be done to address the debt? So there really needs to be a concerted, like, system-wide effort to promote the, the meal, like, families completing meal bene- meal benefit applications. Um, the farms' free and reduced price meals, that application, um, system. And, you know, the recommendation is using parent liaisons, getting some type of dedicated computer, you know, at the school or a parent night, so families can complete the applications. Some kind of marketing campaign to complete the farms' applications every year. So again, families need to complete the meal benefit applications every year. It expires, um, when does it expire? Uh, is it October, September? Um, pretty much, they, they have thirty days uh, within the beginning of the year, and then there's a date where it expires. We send out letters, you know, to the families, yeah, um, stating that they have to fill out a meal benefit application once again. Um, but there needs to be some type of campaign, maybe from the Communications Office, that are really encouraging families, especially those who are not in CEP schools to fill out these applications. There also needs to be regularly scheduled, um, and ongoing robo-calls, like, from the school, letting parents know that, you know, there's, um, that there is a, a lunch debt. Um, and then also some type of assurance that principals will communicate the debt. So FNS is doing their part in the sense of trying to, you know, reach the, the families quarterly. And then the FNS managers and satellite leaders are, you know, giving the letters to the principals, you know, weekly. Um, but I, uh, sometimes there's a disconnect when principals don't actually, I don't, I don't want to like, but there's a disconnect, basically. Um, the letters don't get to the families. Um, but I also left a, a blank additional recommendations. Um, so that is open up, that is open up to, to you guys. And that's it. I mean, actually, I should ask, are there any questions?
Thank you so much, um, for this presentation. And I will say, I, I am, I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm certainly blown away by these numbers. Um, something told me to ask for this to be put on the agenda, um, just being at, um, a school and hearing about the amount of, like, parents' lunch debt. And I said, this is, this is pretty substantial for a family. I mean, in the hundreds. And so I needed to learn more and I'm sure glad that we have done this. And it really highlights that there is such a clear need in our communities. And, and I want to brainstorm with you on how, um, we can get more families, um, signed up for farms. Um, I want to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments first. Okay, go ahead, Chair Walker.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, a couple of things. Thank you for this information because it's always great, again, to get educated on all of the things. I appreciate that. Now, let me turn on the lights. Okay, um, you know, one of the things that I'm so appreciative of is in work, the, um, Community Schools Team in District Nine specifically, we've doubled, um, we've gone from two to five, um, community schools inside of our area. So I appreciate the work that we're doing there. My question is really around, um, the, the, the debt that, that does exist. One is, do we have funding to be able to, to, to provide the, is the funding there to be able to provide the need for the gap to this? And then what work are we doing, if any? Because I'm a fan of having free meals for our scholars. I, that feel hunger should never be an issue for our scholars. And I'm wondering, are there, is there any work that's being done? Have we calculated what that would look like, uh, for our scholars? And I'm sure you, I see you saying, yeah, so I'm sure you've done that work. If you can help us to understand what that would look like, or is, is there any trajectory to get to that place? What's our plan to be able to eliminate what we're seeing right now? Thank you.
Right, I mean, there has been legislation, I think at the state level, trying to get, um, free, you know, meals for students within Maryland. I know some other states like California, you know, I think, uh, I know, I know California because that's where I came from. And, um, and all of their students get free meals. So advocating at the state level, I think, um, would be, um, a good thing. I know that our association, this, uh, the School Nutrition Association does that as well. Um, at the, the local, at the national and the local level, getting meals, um, free meals to students. Um, but that would be one thing. I mean, if you, um, and your constituents can like, you know, address that with the, with legislation, that's still trying to get passed.
And, and I'd like to add, another is we've dramatically increased the number of CEP schools, uh, that also supports, and I think that was shown in one of the slides, that, uh, provides free meals for all students who attend. Uh, and that was one of the strategies to improve, uh, access, uh, to, uh, to meals for all families without it turning into a debt for the school district.
And, and I would just add, um, on your first point there, Chair Walker, around the affordability of this. I would say that it is not a, a budgeted expense at this point. I think it's every year, we, we then have to calculate what that debt is to satisfy it. So, um, uh, Chief Howe may have more specifics on it, but I, I don't think it's a, a, a budgeted amount per year um, that, that she's just, uh, that, that's, that, that we are expecting. I think it's when it happens, we, we, we settle it up at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. I'll raise my hand for the second round.
Yeah, and that's correct. I mean, for the last couple of years, the amount of debt, as you saw, has substantially increased since the pandemic. And so we have been having these conversations internally because it's not something that we budget and plan for. We're able to, we have been able to pay for it at the end of the fiscal year. Um, as a result of savings in other areas that allowed us to cover that student lunch debt. But it's, it's not a sustained part of our systemic budget, uh, system-wide budget for any given operating, uh, budget year.
Okay, I'm going to go to, um, Board Member, Student Board Member Jamal Jungle.
Hi, uh, I don't know why I'm, I'm not showing up on the camera right now, but, um, hi, I'm good evening, everyone. I just, well, one of my questions was kind of answered already where I was like, um, is the student debt, um, lunch debt, um, holding kids from being, from graduating from a PGCP's school? But I think, um, that was kind of answered where I heard that you guys really kind of used any type of saving money to pay that debt off. Um, and then my second question was, um, I kind of, I agree with, um, Board Chair Walker, um, basically concerning about like, yes, I feel like, um, you know, I've always been an advocate for like students having free lunch. And I was wondering, um, if we're ever looking at the stats of the amount of students we have in the county and how much students are actually getting school lunch, and if we're able to maybe like, you know, see the, if we're able to see that those numbers, um, aren't as, I don't know how to say it, but like, basically, if there isn't that many students really getting lunch, if we're able to, you know, find a way to, you know, kind of be able to have that, how to say it, that debt would have been able to pile up as much because we're able to use that money towards the students that actually eat school lunch, in a way. Um, and then also, when looking at the, like, the top schools with, like, the negative charges, like, I, I mean, I, I see a lot of, like, you know, really like District Nine schools, I can say, um, my school's on top of, you know, is on this list also. And, um, yeah, I think a lot of it does also have to really do with promoting. I feel like, um, you know, parents don't really know about the free and reduced lunch form. Like, I mean, I know we're trying our best, but it's not getting sent everywhere. So I think we do, um, have to like really team up with communications, um, you know, make sure that we're using, since we have, you know, student view and stuff, where, you know, getting that new information, we're able to push that out so that parents know that there's an option instead of having their kids rack up this debt. Because, you know, we don't want nobody to go home hungry, but also you don't want, you know, that, of course, also. So, yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, you know, I, I have a few questions here and some thoughts and ideas, um. I, who, first question is, who manages the lunch, the lunch allowance fund? Is, who, where does that fall?
Sharon, did you want to answer that question?
Yes. Good evening. Um, so the, um, lunch loan allowance fund, which, um, is a donation. So we have, um, forms that can be filled out. And if a parent or an organization, um, they want to transfer, like, they have a student that graduates or they leave the district, um, they can use the form, fill it out, and then I'll, I can transfer it either to, what I normally do is that if their child is at a particular school, that's the school that I will actually put that donation towards.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much. You know, it's, I, I, I know we talked about, um, communication and how we're messaging the free and reduced lunch, uh, the farms' form, um. You know, I think that, you know, quite frankly, just the use of the acronym FARMs could be confusing for people. Have you all polled people just to say, do you know what FARMs is? Do you know what the acronym stands for? Because I think that many people may not know what that means. Um, I think like just people just generally may not understand like what the acronym means. And so I'm wondering if that can be a part of the communication strategy is just doing a poll and understanding, do people understand this? Or do we need to re-change our terminology? We need to revisit our terminology on how we promote this, that this is the application to receive free and reduced lunch and not using that. Um, I'm wondering if this can be a part of school registration. Is my understanding, students need to be re-registered every year? And, you know, could this be a mandatory component of that? It's filling out the form and maybe, you know, you know, because it, what I'm understanding from my, what I'm deducing from this data is that there may be people that may, they may not be filling out the form because they don't feel that they qualify, but they still need, they're not making, they're making too much money that they don't think that they qualify for farms, but they're not making enough money to support with lunch daily. I, I guess that's what I'm deducing from this information. And then lastly, um, you know, something that I, something that I've been, you know, a strong advocate for, for the past few years, and I've been trying to, to help, uh, you know, our, our county and our foundation really think about this. to help uh in our our county and our foundation really think about this. But just in other jurisdictions that, you know, we touch, they leverage their endowment to pay off the lunch debt shame. So for example, eh, I believe in Montgomery County, they'll take, they have an endowment. And then the interest that they make from the endowment, they will then use that to pay off lunch debt shame. And I know in places in Virginia, they use funding from the endowment to support with other, you know, like revitalizing playgrounds or intense, they can take that out of the maintenance budget, and they can take this off of the school system. Have you all explored co- connecting with the communities, um, the um Equity and Excellence Foundation to to see if there may be a way that we can to partner around this particular issue? And if not, can we help facilitate that? Lastly, um, is this form included in Parent View? Is that something that we can do a push message out through Parent View to get people to say, have you felt, do you understand that this form will help you to receive free and reduced lunch? You may not think you qualify. Think again, you know, can we use Parent View and synergy to help push that information out? Those are some of my thoughts and comments.
I can speak to the question around the foundation. They have provided contributions in the past to help go toward student lunch debt. It's it's not enough to completely eliminate it. Um, they have made substantial contributions, but the debt has just continued to escalate. So it is an option we've used on a regular basis.
And uh frequent communication is sent home to families, not just using an acronym, but actually spelling out what the benefits are uh available to families. But certainly, we'll continue to look at our communication strategies with families um to try to make the um options as clear as possible.
And and we do send um paint, like printed uh meal benefit applications um to the school, so that they can put them in their um beginning of the year packet. This year, we also created a QR code for the principals to post up at the at the offices. Um, you know, one for My School Bucks and one for um applying for um applying for um the meal benefits. So um, yes, we are, you know, doing as much as we can to try to get the information out.
I'm sorry, and I'm just trying to understand, for the application, does someone have to give their financial information, like their tax information, or that's what what do you?
Um, so basically, they just have to list out the number of um people in the household, the total number of people in the household and the total income. And then, you know, if they do it via, eh, the easiest thing to do is just do it, um, you know, via the website. And it gets, you know, uh directly, um, it'll it'll be, it'll be a faster process, basically. Machine, you know, the computer will, go ahead and um, you know, see if they're eligible.
So perhaps there may need to be some myth busting, maybe like uh true or false about Farms. Like, you don't have to give your tax information. You don't, you know, you don't, because that might be why there may be some hesitancy on account of people to submit the form, because they may feel that they have to give information. I I'm not sure, I'm just brainstorming right now.
Yeah, we are required to, there is a, there is a verification process. So we'll, you know, we will, we're accepting uh meal benefit applications throughout the year. Um, but there is a verification process usually that happens at the beginning of the year. Um, and MSDU will require us to do a percent to to um to verify income of a a percentage of um in the application that we've received. So not all um applications will be verified, but again, you know, it could be luck of the draw.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Yes, um, thank you so much. I just wanted to first say thank you for the work you all are doing. Ms. Dr. Coleman, your whole team has been on here tonight. So thank you for all the presentations and all the work that you guys have done. You know, one of the things I was thinking as we're hearing these um astronomical numbers and the debt that it it not only costs the system, but even how the parents feel when they're not able to do, you know, the cost for their children. It's a tough space for all of us to be. So Chief Howell, I was wondering if, it doesn't have to be right away, but if we know that number of if we're able to get any additional funding um for this, what that looks like for free meals? I know it's astronomical for a hundred and thirty three thousand scholars, but maybe just knowing that would be helpful. Um, a number for us, that would be good. The other thing, um, I I know that my schools, I'm on a PTA uh pushes for my schools and the emails. And I do get these numerous times about the free and reduced lunch. But I wonder, when we get our, I'm talking about when the board gets our communications person, this is something like they can start taking the information that you all are giving and helping us to create um just things to continuously get out to our constituency. I think part of the gap is just getting information out to people and having them see it, helping us to advocate. So I just wanted to put that out there. When I brain, when I brainstorm what it could look like, I know some PTAs put money in a fund, but we've, Chief Howell, I didn't hear you when I was getting out of the car, but I would love to see us budget for this, like a line item that's for this so that we could have a fund. I know I'm saying it to you, and you don't put the money in there, but I would just love to see a line item. And not that we want everybody to go and get it, because we don't have funds to do that, but us knowing that we're not trying to grab money at the end of the year to be able to make up for where we know some some scholars are falling short.
Yeah, we we haven't been in a situation where we've needed to add additional money to the budget. We do have money that we um subsidize to the Food Nutrition Services Fund every year. We cannot use the fund dollars to pay off student lunch debt. However, if the subsidy that's needed for the Food Nutrition Services Fund is less than what we budgeted, we have been able to use those remaining dollars to help pay off student lunch debt. So we haven't needed to add more money, but it just becomes to a point where how long are we going to be able to sustain? You know, having essentially, you're sort of creating your own universal free lunch program. If this is what's going to become part of the process. And so I think we're trying to solve for the problem.
Yes.
opposed to continue to support, um, you know, we obviously want to make sure that our scholars are 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 being fed and they have food that they need. But I think we're looking at the bigger problem holistically across the state, because all LEAs are in the same boat. We don't get funding from the state for this. And we're all having to use money from our operating budget to pitch in where we need to in order to cover off on that student lunch debt.
Okay, the only last thing I'll say, if I could, on Board Member Adam Stafford, is that okay? Okay, just real quick, is can we not use state money? Do we, is there stipulations around, does it have to come out of operating costs?
Well, our budget is funded from the state and county, and that comes into our operating budget. So
No, I understand.
Well, that's being used, if if we have, if we're taking money out of our operating budget, it is coming from state and county funds that we're able to use to pay off student lunch debt.
Got it. If we go out and start advocating for the money that we need, we need it to come. I'm just asking, there's not a separate fund that is for the school fund. It is that we need the money to come into our operating budget, so that then we can dedicate funds. Okay, thank you. I'm clear.
Okay, thank you so much. And we may have to come back and revisit this in the future, but I know we're here at time. And I um want to thank everyone for being a part of this discussion today, and I think it was very enlightening and eye-opening. Okay, um, we're going to move now to item five point O adjournment. Um, the August twenty um first, twenty twenty four meeting follow-ups have been posted. Our next virtual um OBFA meeting will be November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, please continue to can check, please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. We also want to encourage people to fill out the board operating, um, the twenty twenty six operating budget recommendations, community survey forums. We'll be presenting that um in an upcoming meeting, so we ask all board members to continue to send us out to your constituencies. Um, thank you. With no further business, thank you all for the great discussion. The time is now seven oh one, and the OBFA meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.